We separated two items from personnel and they are now.
And I need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Barb, second by Dale, all in favor, I. Is Carrie giving a thumbs up?
Hi.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. And then our recognitions, we have a couple retirement recognition.
At this point in time, board members and members of the audience, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Chris Seibert, our high school principal.
Even years. Lori years spending eight hours a day. Five days a week. You get kind of close. They are your family away from home. You care about them, they care about you and you become extremely close. You know their families, you teach their children. You take care of one another. So to put into words what they mean to you is difficult. Because they mean everything. We, I am extremely happy for them reaching this life milestone. It is kind of like when your children grow up, go off to college and start a life of their own. You're so happy for them, but there is an emptiness in their absence. I will miss them here at work. They do have a way of keeping me grounded. Over the years, obviously, we have many stories of each other and I would like to tell all of them, but a couple will have to suffice. First Pam. Pam actually saved my life at school one day. I was assistant principal and athletic director, Pam was my secretary. I was eating one of those peanut butter chews on Mary Jane and a custodian, I'm not sure if it was Randy Gilman or Dan Lern, but was in the office and told a joke. I started to laugh and the chew went down the wrong tube. I started to cough and it just keep going further and further down. I wasn't very smart in those days, so I went into my office because I didn't want anyone to see me choking. Pam kept looking in and seeing me and I was turning blue and unable to breathe. She asked if I was okay and all I could do was shake my head no. So she yelled to Joey Conlin, who was my intern to come help me. She proceeded to get on the PA in a very, very calm. Voice. Announced nurse, nurse, we need the nurse in the high school office now. Well, Joey gave me the Heimlich and the chew came out and I was okay. That time, all the other administrators were in admin council. And Don Hensel, who was a high school principal, had heard the call and called Pam and wanted to know what was going on. She replied, it was Mr. Seibert, he was dying. That was a scary day and I am so grateful that Pam was there looking out for me. Now Lori. First of all, she was the very first person I met here in Salamaka. I came in for an interview in January of nineteen ninety-three. She was then the middle school secretary for Bob Bell. And the stories I have of the middle school days are many and quite funny. But the one that sticks out to me most is still discussed to this day. It's when I was a young teacher, in her words, a little whippersnapper. I was coaching soccer and being a young teacher coach, I was an expert in everything. Somewhere along the way, I think I forgot everything because now I'm an expert in nothing. But I was coaching Todd, her son, and Todd was young, just went through a growth spurt. He was a little gangly, he had not grown into himself yet. He was maturing. Well, I went to Lori and tried to convince her to send him to speed camp. Because that would have been the answer. Lori just looked at me and said, oh, okay, I will look into that. Come to find out what was really going through her mind was you are out of your mind, you little whippersnapper, he's going through puberty. Well, he didn't end up going to speed camp and the following year in midseason, Todd said, hey, coach, do you want to race? I said, sure, passion, and I laughed and then I said, if you win, I'll never race anyone again. And I've never raced anyone again. Pam and Lori, I cherish all of our memories, the great ones, the good ones, the scary ones, the funny ones, the embarrassing ones, and even the sad ones. We've been through a lot. And I'm glad you're always there, not only for me, but for our students and staff as well. Best of luck in your retirement. Oh, we have two plaques, one for Pam and one for Lori. This one is for Pam, it says, to honor your service to education presented to Pamela J. Frank. In honor of your commitment and dedication to ensure the quality education for the students of the Salamaka City Central School District. By word indeed, your presence, service and hard work has enriched the lives of students and staff and served as an example to all. And Lori, you can take this box. Lori years says something completely different. To honor your service to education presented to Lori J. Pashen. In honor of your commitment and dedication to ensure the quality education for the students of the Salamaka City Central District. By word indeed, your presence, service and hard work has enriched the lives of students and staff and served as an example to all. And there is no crying in baseball, but in retirements, there is. We still have a couple of months.
The whole meeting. Thank you for coming. And next we have the hiring process and hopefully that won't make us cry too.
I hope not. Um, I'm going to try and hold this and do this over here. I can say that Lori was here when I was in school. Here. I used to work with Lori in the junior high office when I was in high school. So tonight we're going to talk about the hiring process. Are we good? Maybe. No, we're not. All right, I'll stand over here instead. Okay, so we're going to talk about hiring for both certified and classified staff members. This is the same thing I'm going to talk about in a second, so you can look at it two different ways, you can look at it through following the flow chart all the way through. And all the way through to the end or. We'll go through it this way. So whether you're hiring for a certified person, which is an STA or a SASSA or an administrator person, or if you're hiring for classified, which is. CSU or SSO employee or confidential managerial. You start with the request form, so that that form gets filled out saying what position you're hiring, why it's vacant in the first place. If there's a, you know, somebody has left, if it's a brand new position, if somebody transferred out of that position into another one. Um, let's see, why else, somebody retired. So we start with that form. Once you get through that form completed, it goes to the superintendent. He then provides it to Josie and Sarah in HR office and they start from there for certified. They post the position and appropriate locale, sometimes it's an internal position that will need only, so it'll just get posted internally. Most of the times it gets posted externally, gets posted in the different papers. In a local region, it'll be posted on the website, Levi hits up Facebook site as well. All the applications come in, they're all screened for completeness, if something isn't complete, if the. Application isn't complete or they did the application, but they didn't submit the resume or letters of reference and things like that. They'll follow up with them and make sure that everything gets turned in. Then once all of that is received, it's given to whomever is hiring the position. So I'm going to pick on Mark. If Mark is hiring the position, everything is given to Mark in a blue folder. He looks through it and determines who is going to be interviewed. Once that happens, then it goes to their secretarial staff to bring in or schedule the interviews actually. And then. They will do little bullet interviews, especially if it's a teacher, they'll do a bullet interview to see if they're going to go on to the next step. And then they'll go to a committee interview, which is conducted by the administrator who oversees it. They get through that one, then they'll go through a lesson plan interview where they'll actually teach a lesson to a student, a bunch of student volunteers. Or actual classroom. And then after they determine who's the best candidate out of there, that candidate is sent on to the superintendent. With the paperwork completed, once the superintendent does his interview, then it comes on to the Board of Ed for. Your approval and then the new hire is brought on board and all the onboarding is done, they make sure all the paperwork. That fifteen forms that have to be filled out are filled out. Um, they are given their device and instructed on how to do that, they're also instructed on how to perform. The mandatory trainings that we have to do through safe schools and. What is that? Know before, I knew it was something where the cybersecurity one. And then they're given, you know, their assignment as to which building they're in and then the principal takes over from there. With, oh, it's wrongly. Classified employees, these are all employees that go through the civil service position. New York State Civil Service, the classifications are exempt labor, non-competitive and competitive. So the majority of them are these three down here, these three are permanent. Um, so labor would be, for instance, a bus driver or cleaner, custodian. Non-competitive, essentially the same thing. Non-competitive is also food service employees. Competitive would be those that actually have to take a test to be reachable. So you have to be qualified to apply for the test, you can apply for the test and now and civil service can come back to you and say. Sorry, but you don't meet minimum qualifications, so you can't take the test. So hopefully, once you take the task, you become reachable, which is within the top three scores. And civil service provides that list to us. Then you can be hired as provisional, which means. You work until you are through your probationary period. Once you're through your probationary period, then you're hired permanently. If there is not a list available at all, you can be hired as provisional. Teresa, you okay? Okay. Just want to see if I had to call Pam or something. If if there's not a list available at present and the test isn't scheduled yet, you can be hired as what's called provisionally. Which means that if you meet the minimum qualifications of the position, you can be hired into that position and work that position. Until civil service actually gives the test. Once the test is given, you need to be reachable within that test. And if not, then you lose your position and whoever is reachable on the civil service list. Would get the position. I think it's three years. Before a new list comes out, or if they they test again in the meantime, then the new test becomes the new list. So if we wanted to hire, I'll use Pam and Lori because they're leaving, so we want to hire a keyboard specialist. Which I believe is their title, we have to call civil service and say, hey, we need a keyboard specialist, can you give us a list? So they'll provide us with list that we have to go through. Civil service will canvas the list is what they call it, basically they they contact the people that are reachable off the list. And say, hey, Salamaka has this position open, would would you be interested in that position? If they say yes, then we interview them, if they say no and enough people decline, then we can go farther down on the list. Um. In order to take the test, you have to meet the minimum qualifications, there's a fifteen dollar fee and then. You, it's that's up to the individual to pay the fee and and take the test on their own, that's not something that the district does. On their behalf, sometimes the tests are given promptly after a person starts and sometimes they're not. When civil service determines they're going to give those tests is beyond me. Because you can request one, but it could be a year or two years later before they finally schedule it, or it could be two weeks, you never know when they're going to schedule. And that's not just here, that's across the state. Um, so again, civil service, you go through the canvas list, you interview, you can select, then test and they have to be reachable. We have had, not since I've been here, but prior to me, we had a couple people in civil service positions that were provisional. And once the test was given, they didn't either pass the test or they weren't reachable, so they lost their positions. We've actually had two people. Since I've been here in the last twelve years that took the test and were not reachable. So they lost their positions. Um, once a person is hired, all of this paperwork is required to be in their personnel file. And this is what we've been doing with the forty plus hires that we've done this summer is on Mondays. Our girls, Josie and Sarah will come in and they'll meet with the individuals. We bring them in every Monday, there's anywhere from two to ten or so. That'll come in and they go through all of this paperwork to make sure that they have everything, that they understand everything. And everything's all ready to rock and roll, so they can start their individual mandatory trainings and then start their positions. For the district onboarding, as part of that process, they go over the handbook, whichever union contract is available is provided to them. The school calendar, meaning district wide calendar. Applicable work calendar means whichever union they're in, because some of them have different days off than others. Um, benefits overview is to go over everything that we offer, whether it's optional or mandatory benefit. FMLA, when you do and don't qualify for FMLA, you receive your laptop and you get your training on that. How to sign into the absence software and request. A day off or request a substitute if you're a teacher. And to go into your safe schools and know before mandatory training requirements. Once that's all done and you've been on the job for a while. Annually, all certified personnel go through an APPR evaluation or an other. Evaluation, for instance, Mark and I don't do APPR, but we have a different method of evaluation. But all the other certified staff has APPR classified. After ninety days, the individual who is supervising that person should go through an evaluation with that person. To make sure that they're doing their job correctly and make sure that they're on the right track to remain in the position. Quarterly SSO transportation and facilities, we're working on getting reviews for them. And a quarterly basis, transportation's pretty good, facilities, we're still working on that one. And then annually, everybody within the district should be evaluated, whether it's through an APPR process, if you're certified. Or a regular evaluation process if you're not certified. And I think. So we hired. Pretty close to, well, no, actually. Forty, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-seven, pretty close to sixty people this summer. Um. So and we're still ongoing tonight, you're going to have a whole bunch of of new hires, so that's included in that count. So there's also been that many. Orientations as well, Josie gave me a little fun fact for you that there were over one thousand personnel actions that occurred in twenty twenty-one year. So that's a lot of activity with personnel, be it hire, terminate, transfer, you know, advisor. Coach, you know, all those different things that we have to make sure that we get through process through the board. Y'all have any questions? You know, it was kind of quick, but the going back through this. This is really the process, so if you get, if you were classified, is there an existing eligibility list? Yes, so then you request the county to canvas it and so on and so forth. Um, and then once you get to this end, it goes to the next page and continues out until the board approves the hire. It's just a different way to look at it, show off different variables. And that's in a perfect scenario.
Just one addition to this is Karen had noted that the staff goes through. After they're hired and evaluation process for our certified staff, teachers and administrators, that. Evaluation period based on their past employment history could be an additional three. Or four years where the evaluation process continues. At that point in time, then they receive their permanent status as a tenured employee that's certified and that entails certain. Contractual and legal rights to due process. Under the classified realm, it generally is approximately twenty-six to fifty-two weeks. And then that same process occurs, they go from provisional or temporary to permanent. And then that entitles them to certain contractual and or statutory due process. Benefits of reaching that milestone of tenured or permanent status. So technically, the evaluation process extends well past board appointment for most employees. For a period of approximately a year to four years and in that time, the administrators and the supervisors. Take great care to make sure that the hiring meets with our expectations, our goals and. The requirements that we have for the particular position, whether it's a driver in transportation, custodial, food service. Or instructional or administration, so it does, we put a lot of time and care into this to attract the best, most viable. Candidates that will be able to be of service to us like Lori and Pam for, I won't say how many years, but a while. That's ideal, that's perfect. And the thing that. I will just say for tonight, this is the first time. In the eleven years that I've been with the district, that we have not had. A staff member leave our employment other than retirement or promotion within our district. We have not had a staff member leave our district to go to another district. And hopefully I didn't just jinx ourselves, but I think that's a significant milestone for us. With our care and diligence of hiring staff and then making sure that once they're hired, they have the professional development and training to grow in their profession. Or their career or their vocation.
Anyone have any questions for Karen? Okay, thanks Karen. Nice job. And next we have our school and safety reopening.
Yes, thank you, good evening. Good news is our summer programs for academics, enrichment, sports, skill development and STEAM are still underway and we've had a lot of positive feedback regarding those programs. Students that are indoors are expected to follow the same guidelines for mask wearing and social distancing that we have had in place throughout the spring while school was in session. All adults on campus must wear masks while in common areas, while vaccinated adults who are not interacting with students may remove their masks while in their workspaces. With regard to the fall, we are preparing for a full return of students in September. And when I say a full return, I'm talking pre-pandemic. So we are also though preparing for full remote instruction and pretty much every other type of instruction that would fall along that spectrum. And the reason we have to prepare for pretty close to anything is because we simply do not have any guidance on how school will look in the next few weeks, so we will be ready for anything. In order to assist with our planning, a recent survey has been sent out to parents to determine the number of students who wish to attend school virtually. So that information is coming in and we encourage our parents to get that information back to us. Additionally, the survey asks if students plan to utilize our transportation services. We know many of our students either walk to school, some of them drive themselves at the high school. And then some students are typically dropped off by parents or other grownups. Having this information now is important so that we can become more efficient with our routing. We know that we are currently about eight bus drivers short to make all the runs that we anticipate are necessary if all of our students are taking the transportation. And that has resulted in the transportation department running several training programs, so. If you've seen on Facebook or pretty close to anywhere else, we can publicize it. We are desperately looking for bus drivers. We will provide the training, we will help all the way from the permit, getting a permit, all the way to getting your CDL bus driver license. Additionally, and most recently, we have announced that there's a one thousand five hundred dollar bonus, so sort of a signing bonus for new drivers. So hopefully that will encourage additional people to at least take a hard look at whether or not this will work for them. So going back, again, we don't have any new guidance for school operations, at least not since June. There has been some minor speculations of what that might look like. The Commissioner of Education has made some requests and a memo came out last week Thursday. That was really just sort of a memo saying we're waiting on guidance. Unfortunately, the district is pretty far down on that decision list, we have to follow the CDC guidelines, state guidance, state department of health guidance. County Department of Health and then we can make decisions based upon that information. So at this point, there's still a lot of information that we do not have, but what we do know and what I'm confident in saying is that our teachers and our staff will do everything in their power to support our students. And that they will do a great job at it. I knew somebody was going to ask me seventeen dollars, seventeen dollars an hour for. Our bus drivers and that comes with full benefits and they're guaranteed. It's four hours and that is considered full-time employment with the district. Yep, so some other, and you have to be cautious and do a little looking around if you're sort of shopping around for as a bus driver. One of the things that you need to look for is if you need benefits are the benefits included and most districts or many districts, I should say, do not include benefits. So they might be a dollar or two more, but you're not, you're end up paying significantly more for. Your benefits. So we're proud of the benefits that we do offer, we believe we have a pretty competitive wage. We offer professional development down there and it's a pretty nice environment, so between the support that we provide to them. And. Everything else that we can really do to help them out, we we anticipate that our drivers are happier. Great question. So the signing bonus comes in three different phases. Once if when they sign on essentially sort of as their first bus run. So after they get their license and they're signed on with us, they'll receive five hundred dollars, they'll receive another five hundred dollars in December at sort of the mid-year point. And at the conclusion of their first academic year, so in June, they would receive the third five hundred dollars. Great question.
Want to have?
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to communications. Do we have anyone from Title VI?
Thank you Bob. How's that better? Okay, so now I scan out Google Lego, Jessica Kraus. I serve as the Vice Chair for the time being of Title VI Indian Parent Committee. So we had a meeting here in this large group instruction room. On the twenty-eighth of July, so we covered a few things. I just want to give a quick recap. Michellea Reddy of the Native American Services, she was nice enough to recap all the different events and going ons and where the funding streams went throughout the year and. Looking forward, we look to try to get some of those funding streams to alter, but we understand that. For the next school year, everything's pretty much where it's going to be, but we we hope to do some changing around in the future. So I'm just going to throw it out there for once and then I'll do it again. At the end, we are going to do another meeting next month, right here in this room. And it's going to piggyback right off of the welcome back. Events, so that'll be August twenty-fifth, seven PM in this room. And to try to entice people to come, we're going to have some ice cream and we'll also make sure we include some dairy-free ice cream. And just some other treats that are also minded towards, you know, not too sweet for late at night, but also mindful of different dietary needs. So we'll throw that out there. Hopefully we won't have a long meeting like the last one, just for a heads up, we had the meeting and it lasted until almost eight o'clock. So we we had a lot to talk about. So I'll continue again. We also, at this upcoming meeting, will be looking to reorganize. So we're looking for people that are interested in Title VI. And if you want to learn more about Title VI, one thing we discussed and established from that last meeting was to have Michellea Reddy include on the Title VI tab. Links to the information, links to the different laws that govern Title VI, links to any of the forums. To our minutes and furthermore, we have some people that are even willing to do some testimonials. So. I volunteered to do a little testimonial on there just to kind of get some faces and names and voices. So it's not just clicking on links and seeing text. So we're going to try to become more of a, more of a driving force and just more present because. We need to get that going. So please join us on that reorganization. We're looking to assist with the bylaws and try to get that going and. Furthermore, some of the things that we really want to get promoted are things like ACES, A I S E S, the acronym goes for American Indian Science and Engineering Society. I'm a part of that program and I participated, oh goodness, back in the nineties. So it's a great program. It gets people ready for college and gets them out of their their usual and gets them ready to. Step into the big wide world and take that big leap and step forward with confidence. So. Other programs that we talked about were in med, Indians in Medicine. And also we had a couple of other people that were present at the meeting and one of them was Jerry Jane Jimmerson. She works for the Seneca Nation and our G I S services. She's been there for nearly, if not, I might not be getting it right, but at least two decades. So she's pretty much an expert in her field. And then. Another woman, another woman in science that works for the Seneca Nation, Shannon Seneca, she has a PhD in engineering. And between the two of them, they have a lot of great things that they can offer. So they look to do some presentations that we can also link on Title VI to try to get people. To associate different faces and have resources of real people that live around here that they could talk to if they want. Anybody wants to talk to them and kind of pick their brain about any of these professions. So we're trying to get that and link all that information to our Title VI. So it's more than just text and reading. So we get. We got those looking forward and just trying to find the people in the community that have, you know, the experience. Is also brought up trying to promote pre-college internships. At large schools even like Harvard, just just shooting for the fences and just. Trying to find all of these different programs and then bringing them forward, working obviously with the Seneca Nation Education Department, some of the school district. All of these trying to get this a bit more robust than it has been and. And going forward, we'd like to do a bit more recording of the meetings, kind of like akin to what has been done for this venue. But to get our Title VI out there in Facebook world as well. So. If anybody has any questions, once again, next meeting, August twenty-fifth, in this room. There will be ice cream and dairy-free ice cream and different treats. So hopefully we reel a few extra people in. Thank you.
Then let's go to this message. Karen, do you want to start?
Sure. I have to take this off. I have the menus for the picnics because our food services are going to be cooking. So remember, we hired Brigade to change the the face of school food. So Prospect picnic menu is grilled marinated chicken kebabs, tomato cucumber and feta salad, homemade non-bread. Warmed corn on the cob with butter, but they're actually going to take it off the cob because it's the locates. Sliced watermelon and then corn cake with strawberries and whipped cream for dessert. Seneca and High School will have grilled barbecue chicken legs and boneless skin breasts, skinless breasts. Summer pasta salad, red potato salad, honey cornbread, corn on the cob with earth butter. Sliced watermelon, chocolate chip and sugar cookies and all the meals will be served with water. So it's going to be our first foray into the new food services and see what happens. And everybody I interviewed the other day and yesterday and last week, they're all like super excited about it as well, the changes and and looking forward to it. So. Me too.
Good. So just send us the dates. Mark?
But I'm all set tonight.
And we'll go on to the board message. We'll start with, how about Dale?
I'm good tonight, but I'm just glad to see people in our stance once again. You know, I know it's about the second meeting we've had him, but I just hope it lasts, you know. I I hope the state comes out with their decree soon, so we so we know for sure. Thank you.
I want to say congrats to the recent retirees. I know they're gone, but congratulations. And I will not be able to. Attend the retreat this weekend. I don't know if this is Meg's last one, but good luck to you, Meg. I don't know if you're going to be here then. So that's all for me.
I would like to say that I enjoyed my Zoom meeting with the consultants for strategic planning that we're meeting with this weekend. And I'm really happy about their focus on literacy and social emotional learning. I'm looking forward to it. And I told them they have to wait for me to get there. I'll be a little bit late.
Zoo?
I would like to congratulate, oh, they're gone now, the girls and any, they're the only ones retiring? Well, lucky us. I'd like to congratulate them. They've worked many, many years and hope they have a nice retirement. I will be at the meeting this weekend and I'm looking forward to it. They have. Some wonderful classes and I'm really looking forward to them.
Meg?
Congratulations to the retirees. One day I hope to attain that. I want to also just commend the district on our consistent just planning and follow-through with the safety and reopening. Again, I know how difficult it is when we don't have clear guidance from the state. But when the Buffalo Business First Magazine came out, we were, I think in Western New York, we ranked number two in terms of. Districts that had the lowest COVID transmission rates. And I think that that's a really strong testament to the the. I know excessive planning, you know, that has to take place because of that. So. I know that it's it's not always easy for for staff and faculty and our families to to have to navigate through some of that uncertainty, but we're clearly doing a really good job with that. The second thing which I'm just going to say, just briefly, we had a discussion. Well, not a discussion, but we had some information kind of presented to us or opinions presented to us a couple of weeks ago on state education law. And I just want to say for our students and staff who are members of the LGBTQIA plus community. That, you know, when we look at state education law, there's also DASSA, which is the dignity for all students, right? And just some of the the language out of that, the amendment to New York State Education Law, Section eight oh one A. Which expands the concepts of tolerance and respect for others and dignity to include an awareness and sensitivity in the relations of people. Including, and there's a long list of things, but sexual orientations, gender identity and sexes. So I just want to say to our students and staff that are members of that community that you matter, you are valued. You are an important part of our community because I know some people, a lot of people watch that on on Facebook. So. You know, speaking as a board member, just want to to put that out there. Last thing is, this is my last board meeting, so it's, I just want to say a thank you. First to my fellow board members, I've really enjoyed serving with you. I know the public doesn't always get to see some of our more spirited exchanges that occur. In executive sessions, having to do with with items that cannot be discussed publicly, but I just, we we have. A lot of differences of opinion, you know, here on the board, we've always been, I think, very respectful. You know, our communications to each other, I really value each one of you and what you, you know, you bring to the to the board. I'm going to miss working with you a lot. I will be occasionally, I think creeping, I guess is the term that younger students use on Facebook to to watch some of those meetings, but. You know, just, I've really enjoyed my time on the board. So so thank you. Also want to give a thank you just to the community for electing me three years ago. I, you know, this community has been wonderful since I moved here eleven years ago, just very welcoming and I'm going to try not to cry. Yeah, so thank you to everyone and I'll miss you.
Do you want to chime in?
Sorry, did you say me, Terry? Hello? Can you hear me?
You hear me?
Oh, yeah. Oh, alright. I'm not getting a hundred percent feedback, but I'll go ahead anyway. I did want to say congratulations to the retirees as well. I know a lot of board members have already echoed that sentiment. Milestone. And it's awesome. I can't wait for the day that I can say I'm retiring. Well, who knows when that'll be. But um, yeah, congratulations. Also, Meg, it's been awesome working with you on the board and I'll say it too, I'm going to miss you. The the points of view, the opinions, the openness that you bring to the board was. Welcome and I appreciate it every second of it. So I'm going to miss you on the board as well and good luck to you in the future, obviously, and I'm sure we'll stay in touch. Other than that, I'm just, I'm going to keep it short and sweet. I'm traveling to Buffalo. We have our O'Heal Storm Girls Lacrosse game tonight, so that's why I'm not in attendance at the board meeting tonight. But it is important to me and I wanted to make sure that I was on the Zoom so I can at least attend, listen in and be active as long as I can. Our game starts at seven, so if we're not wrapped up by the board meeting, I just want to let everyone know that it will be dropping off. But I I appreciate what everyone's doing and, you know, I look forward to the start of school. Thank you all.
And I'd also like to congratulate the retirees. I mean, it's quite an honor for them. To be here through the years that they were. I remember when both of them were here too. And Christian did a great job recognizing both of them. You know, it was awesome to to hear those stories. And I just wanted to, you know, take the opportunity to thank Meg. She was the Vice President. With me and, you know, I want to thank you for your your passion and your enthusiasm and your commitment to the Board of Education and our community. You know, you can tell that education is your passion from the first time I spoke with you. You could tell how much you wanted this district to succeed and I really appreciate that. And I always appreciated your input, just like Meg said, you know, we all have our different personalities. So I always like to go into a conversation thinking one way and I really like it when I change my mind. Because somebody's convinced me to think a different differently. And that doesn't always happen, but when it does, it's like, geez, I didn't think of it that way. And you really brought that out. In me and and made me a better board member, like I think we all do to each other. We support each other and and make each other a better board member. And I'm I'm really so happy that you ran and gave us your three years. I wish you were given five, but you know. I understand and I wish you the the best of luck in Michigan and. I know if I see Gloria's name pop up on the Zoom meeting, that it's probably you creeping in. But we really appreciate, you know, I would appreciate that and welcome any feedback because, you know, a lot of people think things and. They don't always want to voice their their concerns or their, whether it's good or bad. You know, you don't see a lot of parents coming to the meetings. So, you know, again, we welcome people and their feedback. Even if it is critical, because how do we make ourselves better if we don't know that? So. I did want to just take time to say I'm truly going to miss you and I feel like I'm not just losing a board member, but. So good luck. Yes, yes, please. And I told you I'd cry, can't help it, that's why I am. And I'd also like to say. You know, if you're not vaccinated, please go get the, go get the vaccine. You know, you're preventing severe illness, hospitalizations and even death. If you're unvaccinated, wear your mask, you know, don't, don't try to spread it because. It's shown that if you are vaccinated, you're less likely to spread it. I know for me and my family, I want people that are vaccinated around me. So please, you know, go get your shot. It's one of those things where just like. Any other, on any other vaccine, there's always a risk, but the benefits far outweigh the risks. And I know when I was had little babies and I'd always get that shot information and it would say, oh, there's a one out of two hundred and fifty thousand. Chance that your child might develop A, B or C. You always think, what if my kid's the one? So there's, you know, always maybe some risk, but the benefits again far outweigh the risks. And with school coming back into session with this Delta variant on the rise, you know, please, please, please get your vaccine so that we can. All work together to stop this pandemic because this is not political. The pandemic shouldn't be made political. Because it's truly. It it's truly life-threatening and people need to realize that and. You know, you might be fine, but the person you spread it to may not. And that person you spread it to may be a loved one. So stop and think not only for yourself, but also for others. Around you. And the last thing I would like to say is, thanks for our lovely yearbooks. Champion of change, I mean, geez, it just says it all right there. And that's all I have. So I will turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Mrs. Ray. I would like to just recognize Lori and Pam. I won't try to even come close to Chris's eloquent and very personal thank you, but I will just say that Pam and Lori have been pillars and legends in our district. For a very long time and we will miss them deeply and we hope that. We can find individuals. Of a similar character and love of our district as Pam and Lori have demonstrated for many, many years. I would also like to just, as we've heard a couple of times, we do have our board retreat this Friday. We will begin. We will begin with some light refreshments and just some networking and conversations at 5:00 PM. The presentation is actually scheduled to begin with education elements at 6:00 PM. We'll go for a couple of hours and then we'll reconvene the next morning with breakfast at 8:00 AM. And then spend a significant portion of time on Saturday morning, talking about our strategic plan, our goals, our aspirations. And we will probably throw in a few other topics there that administratively, we really could use some board clarity on, whether it's facilities, programs. And this is a great opportunity for us to really button up some planning for the immediate and short-term future as well as long range. With that, I did have a conversation with Teresa this morning. We do anticipate, following a rather lengthy meeting, talking about a universal pre-kindergarten program this morning, we do anticipate posting an additional position to support the students in our pre-K program, our four-year-old program. This will allow us to maintain acceptable and reasonable class size levels and provide additional academic intervention supports to our three, you know, some of the students who will enter the pre-K program will be pretty young and four years old. And we want to get them those foundation skills in a way that will help our kindergarten and our primary program. So we're gonna post that anticipated vacancy, probably within a day or so. So thank you for, Teresa, for taking that call today. By pursuing this position will all, will also allow us, we believe, to provide some additional academic support to the students in the pre-K program at the Seneca Arts and Language Center. And we have had some conversations with the Education Department at the nation. And we'll be pursuing that once we go through that process. And of course, the Education Department will be part of that hiring process. Looking long-term, we do have a meeting that's, we're trying to schedule for next week with the City Library Planning Group that involves the City Library Board, the Salamanca City Government and Mayor McGarra's office and myself, talking about future collaborations for the fiscal year 2022. So hopefully we'll have some updates for that at our next board meeting. And lastly, I do want to take an opportunity to thank Meg for her service. And especially not just her service, but her advocacy for all things that makes Alamanca great. Our students, our focus on academics, the values that we have as a community. Of course, our children, our staff and our shared history and our shared future. Simply put, Meg, you have been a great resource for me as a superintendent. You said I can call you anytime. You didn't say if you crossed borders or time zones or state lines. So I'm gonna take you up on that. I truly appreciate your passion for all things that make education great in our community. And I wish you all of the best. I know your students at Northern Michigan are gonna be truly blessed to have you in front of them and working alongside them in a collegiate atmosphere. And you've helped to make our district and our community better and I profoundly thank you.
Motion by Barb, second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Opposed? Did Carrie give a thumbs up? Abstain. Motion carried. Under old business, we have our policies. So we have 5410, 11, 12, 13 and 5511. So we need a motion to approve those policies. Motion by Meg, second by Dale. Are there any questions on any of the policies? All in favor? I. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. New business is our BOSI's contracted transportation to St. Mary's. So we need a, let's see, we've got a contract that runs for September 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2022 for $94,500 and then one from July 1st of 2022 through August 30th of 2022 for $24,000. So we need a motion to approve. It's, yeah, it's for next summer. Okay. Okay. So we got a motion by Sue. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. And item B is declaring surplus. And that, it looks like there's library, what, books? Yeah, the library bookends. So we need a motion for the items declared surplus. Motion by Dale, second by Barb. And there's, we can't salvage any of these or we can, they're just bad. Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. So we, motion by Dale, second by Brad. All in favor? I. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. Item C is our income eligibility guidelines. So we need a motion to establish the breakfast and lunch pricing. Motion by Meg. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. Item D is authorization to create a new, new food service checking account at KeyBank. So we need a motion to approve the creation of the checking account. Motion by Barb, second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. And then item E is our student affiliation agreement with UB. So we need a motion to approve that agreement. Motion by Meg. Second by Dale. And Bob, can you just go through it real quick?
We have an individual community member who is going back to school to complete their masters in social work, the University of Buffalo. We have not had an articulation agreement with UB. So this allows us to work with students from the University of Buffalo and have them placed in our district to complete their masters level fieldwork.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Meg, second by Dale. Any other questions? All in favor? I. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. My favorite item app is our change orders and allowance disbursement. So we need a motion to approve those. Motion by Barb, second by Meg. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. Item G is to create the position of one full-time food service helper, which is 10-month and a food, senior food service helper, which is also 10-month. Motion by Sue, second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. And then we have an MOA for SSSO. So we need to approve the MOA. Motion by Dale, second by Meg. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. Then item A is our personnel action. We can review those. And item B is our approval of our consent, personnel consent agenda. Motion by Meg. Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Opposed. Got a thumbs up by Carrie, thumbs up by Carrie. Abstain. Motion carried. And then we have our personnel action number two. So we need a motion to approve the personnel consent. Item number two. What's that? Who, who did that? Barb motion and Brad second. All in favor? Oppose. Here's a thumbs up to. Opposed. I will abstain. Motion carried. And we will have our introduction of our newly appointed staff.
So we, I do not see any individuals on the call that are being appointed tonight for the first time, but we do have a tenure appointment. And if Mr. Seabird would like to introduce Mrs. Hill, yes. John is here. Okay. We'll start with Mr. Seabird with tenure and then to Mrs. McGarra for John Haley.
Yeah. So it gives me a great pleasure to recommend Lacey Hill is, is a tenure for our post position. She helps out in our high school office. She's an alumni of Salamanca. She, I believe, was a former student of mine. I don't know, there's so many of them now that just kind of come through. But she's been a great asset. She has worked extensively with sort of practices and helping Mrs. McGarra in the high school office with student interventions. She has come in, she's obviously a Salamanca community member and has just done a fantastic job. So happy to have her here. She is working on her administrative degree. And hopefully at some point in time in the near future, she'll finish that up. And as some of the retirements take place, because I won't be here forever, she'll be stepping into some of those roles. So we are very fortunate to have Lacey and congratulations.
Um, after a, a series of Zoom interviews with a whole bunch of people and then we did a taste test sort of chopped version. John won the round of our new food service manager trainee. He made a Sally High Stir Fry, which was amazing. And I can't wait till it's actually on the menu, all involved. But overall, John had a great interview from start to finish. Not only was I impressed and, and, but the two chefs that we work with through Brigade were very impressed with John and, and what he did to prepare for the interview because they had to create a school-eligible reimbursable meal. So he had to do a lot of homework because that wasn't something that he does every day or did every day, I should say. So he, he had to do a lot of homework in order to, to make that happen in the first place. And then he, he produced a great meal and everybody that was there really liked it. It was a unanimous decision for his, his hiring. So I'd like to introduce John Haley to y'all. And welcome aboard.
Add on to that, John was the first chef that fed us and I ate the whole thing. And I'm not sure I had enough room for the other three chefs. So sometimes positioning does make a difference. So John, welcome and congratulations. We do have one other individual that's on the call, Ray Haley, who is our Director of Safety and Security. And Ray is being reappointed as one of our modified football coaches. Ray, thank you for all you do to keep us safe and healthy and well. But also thank you for giving time to our student athletes and helping our football program grow and find success. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I'm sorry, I'm in the car, so I appreciate it.
Okay. Next, we need to go to the individual employment agreement for John. So we need a motion to approve the contract from August 16th of 2021 through June 30th of 2023. Motion by Brad, second by Dale. All in favor? Sir, a thumbs up by Carrie. Okay. So I will abstain on this. Opposed. Motion carried. And the agreement for us, there's Salamanca City Central School District employee. So we need a motion to approve the agreement. Motion by, was that Brad? Second by Barb. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Opposed. Thumbs up by Carrie. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. And congratulations, Carrie. You made it through the whole meeting. So item nine is our board information reports. We have a couple of first readings of different policies. And, and then we have a thank you card from the class of 1980.
So this came addressed to the district and came to Levi. But Levi was kind enough to forward it to us and it says, "On behalf of the Salamanca High School class of 1980, we would like to thank and extend our sincere, we would like to extend our sincere thank you for your time on a rainy Friday afternoon to display our class photos, slideshow at Vets Park. It really added to the experience. Best regards, Class of 1980." Levi, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Levi. You always go above and beyond. Uh, last, we have our important upcoming events. The sixth and the seventh, we will have a Board of Education Retreat in Niagara Falls. The 12th of August will be our Personnel Committee meeting. The 20, or the 17th will be our next Board of Education meeting. Please join. The 23rd and 24th is our new Teacher Academy. The 25th and 26th are our Welcome Back Picnic. So you heard them. You're at 5:00 PM, so you heard the menu. So please join. And then Title VI, don't forget about Title VI at 7:00 for ice cream. And with September 1st will be our first day back for students. Hopefully, everything will, will go off well and we won't have to do online learning again. It seems like it's right around the corner. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Meg, second by Barb. All in favor? I.
I.
Thumbs up by Carrie?
I.
Okay. I. Okay. All in favor? Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.